... meeting of the Mount Clemens Board of Education in order, please. Call roll.
Mrs. Cahoon, Ms. Collins, Dr. McFadden, Mr. Monk, Mr. Rickman, Mr. Walker, Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Corn has been established, I received a call from Mrs. Cahoon earlier saying she couldn't make it today because of a family situation. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you, the citizens of the Mount Clemens Community School District, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. I ask that you come to the microphone and state your name and address. Be mindful that you may not receive a particular response to inquiry here this evening. You have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. Last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
Kevin Trailer, 25125 Shook Road, Harrison Township. First of all, I just want to say congratulations to the Mount Clemens Boys Basketball Team. I want to say congratulations to the coach. She's doing an amazing job. I love the way that she's bringing the community together. I think that there should be a little more help around her in bringing the community together. She needs it, and I think that that would be more appreciated. So I feel as if, you know, us as a community, we should stick together, and there should be more togetherness and not going against the coach, or attempting to try to push her to the wayside when she's trying to do great things for the community. That's all.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Latasha Cribs, 5790 Corville Street. I'm here because I believe in Mount Clemens. My son been here for the last three years. He's a senior this year, thank God. But I don't believe the admin believe in the students or some of the staff here, and that's very disheartening. The support, or I should say, lack of support that was shown for the senior at Senior Night was very disappointing. The disrespect that was shown to the coach was awful. I feel like if you hire someone to do a job, then let them do the job without micromanaging that person, because you hired them for a reason. You saw something in them, that's why you hired them. And I just feel like if you continue to run a school like this, you won't have one. Or I don't know if that's what y'all aiming to do, because I always hear rumors about, you know, the school closing, and this and that, and I don't know if that's the end goal for Mount Clemens High School to be closed, or what secondary complex. And lastly, I wanted to know, like, the funds. I know the school get funds, I know each department gets their funds. I don't see it being used for the students. What is the funds being used for? Because it's not used for them. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Nikita King. My address is 59 Hollywood, Mount Clemens, Michigan, 48043. Addressing the committee, the disrespect that I have seen from certain board members to other members that are basically advocates for the school, the disrespect that are coming from the board members. Everybody's always talking about, hold the school to a high standard, dignity, respect. Well, I've seen it personally, that the people that speak of dignity and respect don't give it at all. They're very outlandish, very disrespectful, and very, I don't even want to say the word, but disheartening to hear that and to see it from the community. Because I keep hearing everybody talk about the community, the community. The board or the people that are, some of the people that you have on the board are not for the community. They're for themselves, and they're for the persona that they carry around. That's fine that you carry that persona for those many years, but times are changing. A lot of people need to be rotated, a lot of people need to give up their seat, or get up from a seat. If they feel like there's too much to handle, it's always a graceful way to bow out. But I don't feel like that is what's going on here. I feel like it's more, I'm the leader, I've been doing this, instead of hearing the community out. It's been a lot of things that the parents have concerns about, the teachers, funding, the way that the coach has been disrespected. Since she has been here, it's been nothing but a 360. I was here at the last board meeting, and from the last board meeting till now, it's been a total 360. Why do you see so many parents, so many people here? At the last board meeting, it was two parents talking, myself and another parent, and I was very disrespected, because you just, a certain board member just shushed me out of the way. And also, the concern that I had was never addressed still. So all these unaddressed issues are still getting swept under the rug. What is the point of keep having board meetings and we're not addressing these things? Everybody takes this community as a hostile community, but look at the board members that are on the board that are hostile as well. You have to think about that. You have to give respect to get respect. As a community, we're not getting that respect. You don't have parents advocating and coming up here as much as we do. And this is a total 360, even from another superintendent, even from another principal. It's time to change a couple people on this board, on this board, and I want to have a hand in. And that's just my saying. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alina Dixon, 86 inches, Mount Clemens, Michigan, 48043. I just wanted to give a shout out to Carlin. She has did tremendous 360 with the community. I'm also alumni here at Mount Clemens. I moved away a million times and came back here, and I've always found this place to be back home. I currently work for Pepsi in Detroit. I actually reached out to the superintendent and a couple of the people, and I never got a response back, but we can talk about that later. I do want to speak on senior night. That was very distasteful in mine, especially for me trying to bring pictures back, like, the senior shouldn't have been rushed. Carlin shouldn't have been a coach and the coordinator for the whole game. I didn't like the disrespectfulness for males jabbing at her, taking, like, we don't have time for that. Our main focus is supposed to be for these boys trying to win the game and be cordial, and if they see parents being hostile and other workers for Mount Clemens being hostile, what are we trying to prove to these students? So I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. Any questions, common concern, y'all can reach out to me when this is over, okay?
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Ryan Hampton, 40711 Moravian, Mount Clemens, Mount Clemens Township. Well, I'm here tonight because in the beginning of the season, I was very, I guess misogynistic, if you want to say the words. I didn't believe in the woman coaching man aspect. I really didn't. And after the first five games, I was still skeptical, but as I seen, I seen growth. And that's all you can hope for. You know what I'm saying? You can't expect nobody to get out there and just, after the season I heard they had last year, and foresee the 1-15, a 10-8, 9, that's tremendous. That's hard to do. You know what I'm saying? With the same boys. You know what I'm saying? So how could you do that if you wasn't a good coach? Or trying, or putting in effort? And the things I hear from, I ain't, I don't talk to the faculty, none of y'all, I don't really know none of y'all, but the things I hear in the stands, and I hear from other men, you know what I'm saying? It's all about a woman being a coach. And like I said in the beginning, I was against it. But I see game after game. I done been to every game. I got two sons in this district. You know what I'm saying? My mom graduated from here, I didn't, because of the bad choices I made. And I just look at these boys, they trying. And I see the effort of the community, and I'm part of the community. I remember growing up, you know, they had no parents, nobody's here. I don't even see, like, I don't know if any of y'all be there, that's something to guess. You know what I'm saying? Well, I know you, you know, a couple of y'all do, but they trying, and she trying. And I feel like it's a lot of stuff on her head, and it's hard to handle. It's hard, it's, you know what I'm saying? Her shoulders ain't that strong to carry it. And I just feel like, you know what I'm saying? You gotta give her some credit. You know what I'm saying? She care about these boys. And like I, I gotta go, go back to the beginning of it, I was against it, but my eyes open. And it's all about caring and coaching. You gotta care for what you do. If you don't care for what you do, or you don't care about the players, it's pointless. You could put anybody out there, you know what I'm saying? Just like, if she ain't here next year, that's just like, what's going on in the world? Look, like Milwaukee Bucks. They fired a coach, he was 30 and 13, for no reason, and they brought in another coach, and now they losing. If you don't, you can't have no continuity without the same thing. You can't build nothing without the same builder. You know what I'm saying? Nobody can build something, you can't ask somebody to come in and build something out of somebody else, they gonna tear down a project. You know how it go. If a building, an architect, he's not gonna go in a building and keep building up off somebody else, he's gonna make changes, and it's gonna have to start over. And all I do, I want to see her get an opportunity, a fair shake, where, you know, everybody for it, we got to. You know what I'm saying? We have to. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Good evening. My name is Al Hamilton, 186 North Walnut Street. I'm sitting here, and I'm listening to comments and the concerns. I grew up in this community. Family grew up in this community. My family has a healthy history at this school. If you look around this school, the presence of the Hamilton family is something that is vibrant in these hallways. I have a cousin that's a CEO, I have a cousin that is an attorney, I have a cousin that is a serial entrepreneur, all of which graduated and played sports at Mount Clemens High School. If you go into the gymnasium, a couple of their names are up there as record holders. I would like to say I was deprived of my opportunity to play as a bather. But what I wasn't deprived of is the effect that I'm able to have on young people, because that's something that you can't take away. So when people of this community reach out to me, a fellow coach, and say, hey, coach, can you come in? Can you give us some pointers? Can you look at the students? That means something to me. Because although I wasn't able to play, although I wasn't able to cooperate and be a part of the bathers as sport, from a sports aspect, as I was considered a five percenter, I was a person who was often in trouble. I was often a person, I was often a person who was kicked out of school for misbehaving. A lot of times, I was, I felt like I was misunderstood. But now, as an adult, right, I'm understood, and there's some effect that I'm able to have with some of these children. So whenever you have a coach that's from your community, and that person is able to affect the community in a great deal, why is there so many rumblings about what that coach is doing? Because I tell you this, somebody who thought about going for the job, and was thinking about applying, she's done a hell of a job, and she's done better than I could do, and I've won a national championship at the Division II level at Fair State. So the things that she's doing, and the way that she's impacting the community, I think you ought to wrap your arms around her, embrace her, and if there's something that she's not doing right, let's give her some guidance, let's give her some instructions on how she can be better. Because without consistency, you will have the broken window theory. You will continue to have shattered windows, shattered glasses, and before you know it, this building will be left in ruins with nothing. So I think you all should look around, we all should look around, look at ourselves in the mirror, and see what we're actually doing to help, instead of destroying. Because we have a group of young people who are back here, who are listening to all of these comments about their coach, and that's a person that comes in every single day and gives them her time, her effort, right? So be committed to those young people, just as much as you, we need to be to that coach, because she's a reflection of them.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, sir. Agenda is still open for citizens' comments.
Hello. My name is India Haynes. I'm address 169 Court Street in Mount Clemens, Michigan. I just wanted to come up here and say, as an alumni of Mount Clemens High School, I am honored to be back into the community. And to be in this community is to know that somehow, some way, you are often drawn back into it. So I am here to be as a support of the Mount Clemens Basketball Team for the boys as well. Their coaches brought back love into the community, as well as the team. And the support that's needed is not there right now. And I just believe that it's very important and essential to the team, as well as the school, if that support can be placed back into the community in many different ways. And I see this school succeeding with that type of love from everyone around. The boys have had a tremendous turnaround since the coach has came, and they're joyous, and they feel loved, they feel cared for. It is very disheartening to be at games and around the school, surrounding the basketball team, and see board members disrespect and disregard the coach. And I won't, you know, make any assumptions, but we don't know where it's coming from, or why it's coming from, but what I can say is that I hope that it ends. So I just thank you for the opportunity to be able to come up here and say that, but I'm just hoping for more support and genuine care. And thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Last call, citizens' comments.
Carlin Trailer, 25125 Shook Road, Harrison Township. I am up here to just say, I am honored to be the coach of the boys' basketball team. It has been amazing to just build relationships with the young men, be a part of their lives, get to know their families, and I wouldn't trade it for the world. My experience this year has been, it's been a lot. It's been different for me, especially coming from New Haven, where I didn't have any problems, where I was supported a lot, where arms were wrapped around me. So it's different, but I'm up for the challenge. I love the programs down from middle school that I started up into varsity. And again, like I said, I wouldn't trade it for the world, but what I do hope is that we work together, that we don't come against each other, that we don't turn against each other, because from the superintendent down to the janitor, none of us are better than each other, especially if we aren't working together to do our jobs. I have a role, and if I don't do my role, then the superintendent can't do his role, and if the teacher's not doing their role, and the janitor's not doing their role, then none of us are really helping build the school, we're actually tearing it down. So it's my hopes that we can just come together, we can work together, we can support each other, whether being a man, woman, in any role, and that we respect each other, and that the school continues to thrive by us being one. We shouldn't be in front of other schools, we shouldn't be anywhere else in other places and disrespecting each other. We should be together always. We're bathers, we stick together. If we have issues, then we can bring those to each other, or we can talk about it at the appropriate time. I never want to be in a place where I feel disrespected, or being in a hostile environment, especially while I'm trying to coach. I don't think that's fair to the kids. I can take it, but I really can't take the disappointment of losing a game, or being, or being stressed during three minutes left in a quarter, because I'm going back and forth in a situation. I don't want to experience that ever again. I love Mount Clemens. I love my boys. I wouldn't trade them for the world, and I don't think they would trade me. And I just want us all to work together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing or hearing none. Moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda, item five, Board Appreciation Presentation. Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. We have a redo or makeup from our last Board Appreciation. Last month was Board Appreciation, but school was closed due to the weather, so we weren't able to have our presentations from our schools for Board Appreciation Month. So actually, I'm gonna read something first, and then I think we're going GSRP elementary and then high school presentations, but I'll read a little something I got for the board from one of our members of Congress. This was dated for last month. To the school board of Mount Clemens Community Schools, the state of Michigan has designated January as School Board Recognition Month. In the 10th Congressional District, we have 16 locally elected school boards that provide a crucial service to their school districts. They are exceptional public servants who work tirelessly with dedication as they enrich the lives of our students and their care. School boards are the visionaries of the district, they make policy and set the goals for the district. They are the driving force of their districts and represent the students with devotion and passion. They safeguard opportunities for students as they protect the future of students and communities. Therefore, I join the state of Michigan and the Michigan Association of School Boards in appreciating and recognizing the school board of Mount Clemens Community Schools. Sincerely, Representative John James, Member of Congress. We got that in the mail. I want to read that for him. And now I'll have Mrs. Staus, Lou, for our GSRP presentation.
Hi, I'm Lou Staus, the GSRP Coordinator. Last year, we were at King Academy, this year, we're at Seminole Academy. And I will say, we feel like we're part of the family of Seminole Academy. The teachers and all the staff, we all have worked very well as a team, so that we have the team and the family feeling within our building, even though it's a much larger building than King, and we only had two programs over at King last year. So we are excited to be at Seminole. We have a short presentation of some of the things that we do with our four-year oats, and it will be running, and then after, I will pass out our Students May Thank You posters for you. This was the homecoming parade. The staff dressed up as 101 Dalmatians, and I was Corella DeVille. That's individual time at the table, small group. It looks like it was Halloween. Again, there's a couple Dalmatians in the back there. We do have 50% of our staff here this evening, five people. We have a total of 10 staff, so... That was Stan the Fireman. He is a huge success. He has his little train that he runs around in the parking lot with, with the students, and they always look for the black kitty up in the tree. So he's very educational for the kids. If you see in the background, you'll see Santa Claus. This is the first year we did this, and he was a very large success for all of our students. And I will tell you that while I was out that particular month recovering from my back surgery, the staff took it upon themselves to coordinate all of that. I got a text telling me it was done. So I enjoyed seeing the pictures afterwards. I was like, how wonderful, you know? Because not every child gets to see Santa Claus, and we had a phenomenal Santa Claus come, and they received gifts from the program. Oh, it didn't say. All right. Well, the next meeting will show you January and February. Modern technology, like I told Patrick, I said, my technology stops at age four level, okay? I haven't had a fifth birthday yet, so my technology stays at four years of age. So that's why I have a wonderful team that supports me, and they take care of the computer with me.
Ms. Lou, before you get those out, real fast, I just want to say, and you guys have heard this before, I just give a shout out to that staff over there. You and your teachers are doing a great job. Can you share, I know starting off what the numbers were at the beginning of the year, and where they're at now?
All right. One minute, I'll poll my secretary. Sydney, what was our starting numbers?
I think we started at 1, 2, and we're at 60 now.
Yeah, so up to 60 families at our GSRP, our Head Start program, and I'm just very proud of that. If you read any research, or data would tell you the importance of early childhood programming for our student success. It's a huge predictor on the success of students academically as they grow, is that early childhood, those zero to four years are critical in a student's success and growth as they go on and become adults in society. So just shout out to your team for growing that program, and continuously growing that program, and thanks for all you all do.
Mount Clemens is one of the few preschoolers that provide transportation to their students.
Five days, too.
Five days. We went to five days this year. It was a big transition for all of us, because usually Friday is our professional development, our paperwork, all the documentation that goes on behind the scene normally is done on Friday. This year, we have students five days a week. It's meeting the needs of the family, but it's putting a lot of stress on the teachers, but they, bless their heart, have stepped up and are do, they're making it happen, because their passion for the children within Mount Clemens. Also, we have several families that have left Mount Clemens, and they live in Roseville and Warren and other surrounding suburbs, and they will drive their child to our program. So we had the first, the first child, that's like in first or second grade, now we have the second one, and there's, the third one's coming through. We just have to wait till they get to be four years of age. So it speaks volumes for the quality of our program, in that even if they don't live in our district, they will come to our district for our preschool program.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving.
On deck, we have Mr. Fringer and Mrs. Dickinson, who are doing a fantastic job, if I must say. Mr. Fringer and Ms. Dickinson have stepped up to be the co-interim principals at Seminole Academy, and are doing a fabulous job, and are a dynamic duo team, Batman and Robin. Any day, one of them could be Batman, and one of them could be Robin, and so I want to just give them a shout out before they give their board presentation, so we appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Roper, sir. Good evening. My name is Michael Fringer, and I am the honored and proud co-interim principal at Seminole. I've been having a great time. I think we're at week four, I think this is week four, and we have just been having a delightful time.
And my name is Deborah Dickinson, and I am working with Mr. Michael Fringer at Seminole, and it has been an honor, and I thank you for entrusting me and Mr. Fringer with the building.
We have obviously just started to get some traction with the transition over there, but some of the things that we've been working on hopefully landed in your email boxes today. Hopefully, you received an invitation from Ms. Terry Gearing. We're gonna have a celebration at the end of February, on the 29th, from 5:30 to 7:30, celebrating our learning of Black History Month, and we are also having a special guest DJ, inviting the community, 5:30 to 7:30 on Thursday, February 29th, and we would really appreciate it if you could come see some of the things that the kids have put together for this program. There's quite a bit of excitement in the building right now for this party, and when the kids heard DJ, their eyes kind of lit up. So I'm hopeful that we can have some very special guests from the Board of Education join us. I also want to say thank you. The work that you do, I know, is somewhat thankless at times and tireless at times, and I know that if you're here right now, you're here because you care about the community. That's the same reason that Mrs. Dickinson and I are here. I grew up right outside of Mount Clemens. I had fortunate experiences with my parents, visiting prees. I was a young art student, so I visited art of craft quite a bit. My very, very first memories of diversity came from my experiences in Mount Clemens. My very first experiences seeing very big buildings also came from being in Mount Clemens. So I have a history here, and I live in the neighborhood, and so the idea of coming back here to be in this position has been just an absolute delight. So like Mrs. Dickinson, we appreciate this honor, Mr. Roper. We are not gonna let you down, and we're taking it up.
And now we have Michael. Michael, tell them your name.
My name is Michael Dzinski. My name is Michael Dzinski.
Michael has a few notes that he wants to share.
Hello, school board. I've been learning... I've been learning a lot about what school boards do, so I want to say thank you for hiring the right people and making policies to help us all learn.
And that was Michael's research on his own.
Good job.
Good job.
We have a collection of cards, drawings, big posters. So we're just gonna walk over and pass them out. Yes, behind Mr. Roper, you can see some of the visual art that the kids contributed to. And we had as many kids as we could signing during lunch last week. Obviously, pens and hot lunch don't always go together, but we have quite a few signatures on there, too.
They've been fighting on this side of the table, who's taking this? So I just want you to know. You gotta see.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, keep up, good work. Our high school, I saw Ms. McNilly around. McNilly?
I just want to say thank you for all you're doing, and I'm going to leave it up to Wyatt. He is a great speaker, so go ahead, Wyatt.
My name is Wyatt Schultz. I am one of the very thankful members of the Digital Productions and Broadcasting Class here at Mount Clemens High School. And my experience with the class so far has been very, very wonderful. I've been able to express myself in a bunch of new ways, and I've learned the tools, the craft. I know how to run the studio as a director, an audio director, cameraman, obviously, be on-air talent, be the one behind, doing all the technical stuff, all that cool stuff. And we also have a presentation for you here, video behind the scenes for our show, Bath or Babble, that we produce, once a week, live at 9:00, usually.
Nice job.
Technical difficulties, it's my life, dude.
Good morning, beautiful people. Welcome to the new and improved weekly Bath or Babble. I'm Rayon.
And I'm Artesia.
Bath or Babble is simply the best high school news show on the planet. We stream live at 9:00 once a week, so without further ado, let's get to it.
You like reading books, and you love the kids on here. You should check out the book, No David. It's about little boys who make bad choices.
And I'm here with your entertainment insider. It's your good destiny, and I'm here with your entertainment insider.
I'm Chef Wyatt, and on this week's Bath or Babble, we have incredible edibles, where we talk about foods that are, well, incredible.
I'm Sharia, and welcome to Bath or Travel. Let's travel to the exotic Bora Bora. Bora Bora is a small South Pacific island northwest of Tahiti in French Polynesia.
That has turned Detroit's once-provved franchise into Best Wild Laughing Stock.
I'm Aiden, and let's go around the world. In the Middle East, Palestine is in a global crisis right now, and I'm here to talk about it.
I'm Rayon with today's true crime. The Candyman Killer murdered nearly 30 boys between 1970 to 1973.
The internet is abuzz with the recent drama between SS Sniper Wolf and Jaxfilm. According to change.org, SS Sniper Wolf has been accused of stealing content and many other things.
I am Bishop Thomas with your entertainment insider.
So just wanted to say thank you again to the secondary. I know I always say high school, but our principal is the middle and the high school principal for our secondary. Gratitude video. And tonight, just some of our kids' experiences and successes have been highlighted, and there's a lot of great things happening in Mount Clemens, as you all know. That's why we're here every day, dedicated. And if it wasn't for the board allowing me the opportunity to do the things that I would like for us to do, we wouldn't have some of the successes that we're having right now. So in addition to that, just a shout out for the secondary campus. I'll just say that's why we still have a full audience. There are a lot of great things happening here. There are a lot of great people here. There's a lot of people that have been doing a lot of great work before I came, and I'm just still blessed to be a part of this legacy and this history and come in and be able to pick this up and do what's right for kids, kids first. I just want everybody to understand that the narrative will be in this district, kids first. What that looks like takes some time to get it to that point, but we are well on our way. And I can assure you that by the time it's all said and done, you will know us about kids first. And so I just want to just, again, shout out all the people, parents that came out tonight. I want you to know that your voices are heard. They don't fall on deaf ears. And I don't know all the details of the past, but I do know who I am and what I believe in, and what I stand for, and what it's gonna look like moving forward. That's the only thing I can promise you, is what I'm about. Some of the history and the things that have gone on, I hear it all, but I only can focus on, and we can focus on, what we can do moving forward, our circle of influence, and that's what I'm here to do. One of the things I'm most proud of is that before I came here, I know there's been a narrative, and a couple people alluded to it tonight about closing and things like that. I wouldn't have came here and gave up three years of my life for this place to close. So I just want everyone to know that I'm very proud. We planned on having 650 students this year before I got here. The projected budget was for 650 students. I'm proud to say, as of today, we're at 810. So give everybody a round of applause for all the hard work. So I'll get back to our agenda, but I just wanted to add those pieces, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roper. Next on the agenda are action items. Action item six, Consent Agenda under 6A, Approval of the Minutes, 6A1, the Minutes from the February 14th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Workshop. Approval of the January 17th, 2024 Regular Meeting. Consent Item B, Approval of Bills for Payment, B1, Payment Statement to Vendors, January Payment to Vendors. Action Item Agenda Item 6C, New Hires, New Hire 1, Kelly Montica, second grade teacher at Seminole. Action Item, those are the action items under Consent Agenda. There'll be approval of the Minutes of the February 14th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Workshop. Approval of the Minutes of the January 17th, 2024 Regular Meeting. Approval of the Bills for Payment to January Payments to Vendors, and Approval of Hire, Kelly Montica, second grade teacher, Seminole Academy.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Moved by Member D. Walker.
Support.
Second, Member J. Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Action Item 7, M A S B Regional Representative Vote. I don't know if the board received any information, because there's candidates out of our respective region that generally provides information to the Board Secretary, or they sent it directly to board members. I don't recall.
I received the email from M A S B on this vote with the information.
I don't even know, I don't recall receiving it. I don't even know who the candidates are, and we should, you know, there should be some information relative to that in order for us to, because we're, as a district, we're to appoint one, one vote for one candidate. I don't have that information. You can read it, Mr. Secretary.
Do you want to just read off the names?
And let me back to Dante, he's the secretary.
So there were three names, three candidates for a three-year term to represent the region. We have Melody Hines out of Wayne Westland Community Schools in Wayne County. We have Bridget McQuiston out of Lake Orion Community Schools out of Oakland County, and Evelyn Pridemore out of Redford Union School District. I don't know if any, I received the email from the M A S B with the three names along with the link with their information. I don't know if anyone else received the email. Nope. So I don't know how we want to do this.
I don't know when. If you got the information, if you could just read it. I know you got the three names. Is there any incumbent?
The incumbent is Bridget McQuiston out of Lake Orion.
I, that's what, when is the vote? Yeah.
So the lady from M A S B wanted us to do this this month at this board meeting. Through the email.
When did you get the information?
On January 29th. Yeah.
I'm just, why did they send it to you and not all of us?
I don't know if we're just to send it out to everyone or just me.
No, we, none of us got it. They probably sent it to the Board Secretary.
Is this something that we can move at a later date, at a, I mean, we have to have a special meeting or?
There should be on there a deadline.
Yeah.
The deadline is Wednesday, March 6th at 1:00 PM.
It's up to the board if you want to have a special meeting for one agenda item. I don't know how, every vote counts.
Right.
But out of that region, there's probably 100 schools that will be voting. So it's, it's up to consensus of the board, of the body.
Well, my opinion is that I don't, I don't know none of these names. I would like to do some type of research. I don't know, I don't, I mean, that's kind of like the general election, you know what I'm saying? I vote for who I feel represents me, and if I don't know any of them or what they stand for, or what the policies are, I don't feel comfortable in taking the vote. That's just me. I'm speaking for myself.
I'm gonna follow this lead, because the last time we went to the M A S B meeting, it was on some totally different level.
Yeah.
So I gotta know where they stand at, because, yeah, they was, it took us two hours to get past one, two words.
Oh, yeah. I remember that.
Ms. Walker, are you?
Can he send the email to all of us, and can we email who we would choose to one of us to make that decision? Do you know what I mean? We all get the email, we all send our decision of the three to someone on the board or to Mr. Roper, and then the consensus wins.
Is there something required to be voted on?
Right.
Yes, yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Shoot.
Yes, has to be voted on in a public meeting, and has to be approved in the minutes, yes.
I'm not objective to a quick special meeting.
Next is when? When do we want to have a quick special meeting?
Say, March 6th?
Yes.
March?
Did you say 1:00 PM, Dante?
Yep.
I'm in Cancun, first of March.
Let's do it next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yep.
Next Wednesday, what, the 28th?
Okay.
Need a motion?
Need motion to table this?
No. Table it to the meeting, special meeting date, yes.
I move that we table this vote for the M A S B Regional Representative Vote till next Wednesday as for a special meeting, February 28th.
Time, place?
Time, 6:35. I'm making the motion. 6:35. In this location.
Support.
Been moved by Member McFadden to table Item 7, M A S B Regional Representative Vote until a special meeting held on February 28th at 6:35 PM, and it was seconded by Member D. Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
I will forward you all the information after this meeting.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda are informational items. Item 8, Finance Committee, 8A. Are any questions, comments regarding the financial reports? I know it's gone through the Business and Finance Committee, we've had about met on it.
Yes, Mr. President, we looked at all the financial reports, contract listings, and everything seemed to be in order.
Any questions regarding Agenda Item 8B, Contract Listings? Hearing and seeing none. Moving the agenda forward, Agenda Item 9, Superintendent's Comments.
All right, I'm back. Good evening again. I'll try, I'll go fast, I promise. Just a few general things. We talked about NWEA data and our assessment that our students take three times a year. So you'll get some detailed update at next month's data presentation from the schools, from each building, but we've looked at some preliminary NWEA data, and there's a lot of growth and a lot of grade levels that we're excited to share. Always some work to do. We still got a long way to go to close on the gaps that have been created over the years, but some of our students are progressing really well, and I think you'll be proud to see that when we roll that out at next month's board meeting. I already talked about enrollment is up another 30 students since the beginning of the school year, so at approximately 810. We still have a few days to count and capture students in count day window, so that number could increase. A few building level, just updates at Seminole. The Mobile Dentist is gonna be in back there for the entire week of February 26th, providing no services for our youth and our students. You've already heard about on the 29th, the Black History Month program that you all invited to over at Seminole. Seminole also has 10 families attending a Black Author Workshop this weekend at Macomb Community College. It's put on by the MISD, and we're bussing about 10 kids, 10 families there on Saturday. Again, great job to Ms. Dickinson and Mrs. Dickinson and Mr. Fringer for the work they're doing, filling in for like the last five. Again, great job to Ms. Dickerson and Mrs. Dickerson and, uh, Mr. Fringer for the work they're doing, filling in for like the last four weeks. They've stepped up and, and have really, um, put some gas into that building and the morale and there's just a lot of energy in that building, positive momentum, so appreciate both of them and their collaboration and that effort. Not always do you get two, uh, co-leaders that can work together like they do and, and it's seamless. So I'm very grateful and proud of, of their ability to lead that building. Um, at the secondary campus, um, Wyatt and another student, Anton, um, Emmanuel Butler had an opportunity on February second to go represent the district at the Anton Art Center, Museum Center, um, where the governor was there. It was for a, uh, event for Denise Minson there, and I say that right, always kill her last name. But the governor was there and, uh, and Wyatt and Emmanuel had an opportunity to perform, sing a couple of songs and it was phenomenal. We got reviews, pe- people just applauded them and they represented our community in this district well, so great job for Wyatt and, uh, Emmanuel. There's some videos on social media too that, that are posted if you want us to see it for yourself. The governor was really impressed. We had ten students to, uh, attend the Diversity Summit at the I S D. Uh, Counselor Ms. Terry and Mr. Hannah were, uh, they're chaperones there and they represented us well on diversity panel to have this tough discussions that, um, our students, um, are, about what our students are experiencing here in McComb County. Next week, our students will be selecting their classes for the school year during their advisory classes coming up next week. Some, some more highlights for, uh, basketball, for boys' basketball. We have some honors that were, um, shared at, what, what night was that, Coach? At the other night, we, at, we were at, uh, Wayne State. I got the, what, what night was that though? Was that Saturday, Friday?
Right.
Friday night. Friday night, we had a couple of students, uh, honored for different honors at Wayne State University. It's actually where the G League, where the Pistons practice, it's a really beautiful facility. Um, and, um, Coach was there, coaches were there with our students and a couple of families, um, and it was pretty nice. So for boys' basketball honors, Bishop Thomas was second team silver division. Don Redding was second team silver division, Marquise Cribs was honorable mention. And, and what I'm always most proud of as a former student athlete myself and, um, is the, is this, uh, all academic team silver division awards went to Bishop Thomas, Marquise Cribs, Robert Jackson, Ronald Carson, De'Anthony Pickett, Charlie Rucker. Um, and we were the team with the highest amount of academic success in that, in our conference, is that correct? Yep, so to, to the people that got up and spoke, um, I know, I know what's going on and, and the positive things that are happening with that, the culture of our basketball program. And I want you to know that, that I know and that's the reason Coach Garland was the coach and was hired as the coach under my tenure here, so, um, that, and she knows this, we talk about that. That part, the academic piece is the most important piece for me. The athlete, athletic piece, as you all know, you don't have grades, you don't play nowhere. And so the academic piece that our students, I'm very proud of that, you all should be proud of that. And it's just a show, a, a, a piece of, uh, uh, a peek in the window of what our kids are capable of when they're given the opportunity and believed in. So keep up the good work with those high expectations. I told Coach at the beginning, I don't care about wins or losses. You can lose every game, it's about the character and developing these young kids. Now, I'm the most competitive person in the room, trust me. But in order to win, we gotta win on and off the court. And so, uh, that was one of the reasons she was selected as the coach. Um, so keep up the good work to all the coaches, I know I don't always acknowledge everybody, but. And our girls' basketball as well, uh, I'm, I don't want to mess up her name, looks like my daughter's Leila Sears. Is that, is it Leila? Leila was, uh, honored as second team all-conference. And our girls advanced to the Charter School Conference semifinals for the first time, is that accurate? That's good. Um, also in athletics, we are going to be hosting the girls', the M H S A A Girls', uh, District Tournament, March fourth, sixth and eighth. It'll be here in our building, so, uh, that's a big deal for Coach Garland as a new A D. I had that same experience my first year as Athletic Director at Southeastern High School and I got a call from the state and told me I was hosting the district and I said, no, I'm not. It's a lot of responsibility, it's, but it's a great opportunity to showcase our school, um, and, uh, and our, and our school pride and spirit. So please come out and support, it'd be more than our team there, but it's a great, uh, venue for athletics. Um, last but not least, and I always like to end on something that is, again, um, just as, as important as everything else. The high school had a hundred and twenty-four students, I'm sorry, the secondary had a hundred and twenty-four students from grade six through twelve that made academic honor roll. Uh, those students were already acknowledged during assembly here at school and then next month at the data meeting, at the board presentation, all of those students will be identified and recognized. Um, as we continue to move forward and, and, and grow this district in a, in a way that I hear every day that it used to be, the, the history, the culture, the climate, the, uh, expectations that it used to be. We are working very diligently, there, there's nobody around here not working. The people around here that are not working probably are the people that are saying bad things about me, I can promise you that. People that, around here that are not doing what's best for kids are probably not the fans, uh, fans of mine and that's okay. Because that's what I was brought here to do and that's the commitment I made to this community and that's what I stand on, um, is doing what's right for kids. It is my job as the superintendent to make sure everybody knows what that is. There's a lot of people that think they know what doing what right, what's right for kids is and what that looks like in schools. I know what that really looks like. And it takes all of us, as somebody said earlier, it takes community, it takes every voice in this room. When it's, when it's hard times is when it's, and when it's good times, we gotta be there and be together to, to, to celebrate, to hold each other accountable and push each other and, um, and not cheat our kids. As you all know, the research and the data, well, not the research, the data which I've talked about, if you go view any of the last ten board meetings or whatever I've been a part of, the, the data has not been acceptable. Some people ask me why I came here. And I told you this before, I came here because of the challenge, because that there were people telling me, nah, they're writing this place off. Right, you go in there, it's career suicide. That's what I've heard before I came here. But I'm telling you, I, I, I took the challenge because I don't believe that, there are kids here, there are eight hundred and ten souls here that need us. And for anybody that's not doing what's in the right or best for them, we, they won't be here. Somebody said it earlier, uh, and I say this all the time and, and I try to say this respectfully, but, um, to employees, just because you've been here for fifty years doesn't mean anything. If the data doesn't show that fifty years of support or positive things have happened. So we want the right people in this place. There's, there could be a lot of benefits to that, but there, but also know that there have been over twenty years of data that don't support doing what's best for kids and we gotta hold each other accountable, we gotta push each other. There's a lot of great happening here, our kids are capable. I see that Jackson's back there hiding, uh, don't try to hide, I see you, Mr. Jackson. Um, there, there's a lot of history in people that I picked their brains in this district to learn about the history because I'm new, I'm the new guy, right, I'm from Detroit, I'm from the outside, so I don't get the love initially, like, you ain't been here. I got a good understanding of who we are, but I know where we're going and I just need this community and everybody else to continue to trust me like I say to the board all the time, until I give you a reason not to. It won't be perfect, but it didn't get like this overnight and it won't get fixed overnight. But it's a lot that has been corrected and put on the right track thus far, so please don't stop believing in us and let us show you better than we can tell you, because there's a lot of lip service out there, but we gotta walk the walk. And, um, so I can make that, uh, that promise and that commitment that we gonna, we gonna do right and do the best we can and we're gonna be transparent and open, there are no secrets. So anybody that ever wants to have a conversation or a meeting with me or anybody else, don't hesitate to reach out to Mrs. L and, uh, we can sit down. There are a lot of people that, uh, that do it, but sometimes we might, we may, you may need some other insight because there's always a lot of misinformation out there, a lot of people passing a lot of bad information. But if you, if there's anything revolving or involving McComb, I mean, Mount Clemens Community, uh, School District, please don't hesitate to reach out to me and, and hear from the horse's mouth what it is. All right, so thank you, thank you for continuing, uh, to trust me and, uh, onward and upward. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Then Item Ten, Board Comments. Ms. Walker.
You know.
I'm sorry.
I had a feeling you were gonna call me first. Well, first of all, um, a lot of good things tonight. Wyatt, thank you for representing us so well, I didn't know you sang, I expect to hear that sometime in the very near future.
Not tonight.
That's impressive. I had no idea. Thank you, Coach Trainer, for all you do for our kids and for our district, I appreciate you very much. Um, thank you Superintendent for taking the challenge and for believing in us. Eight hundred and ten kids, it's only gonna go up from here. And thank you for the support, for, um, being on the school board. It is truer, truly an honor and a privilege to represent the district and all of this beautiful artwork is gonna be hung on the wall in my office so I can look at it all the time. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll try to make this quick, um, you know, thank you, um, and continued success to the G S R P program, the great presentation, Seminole and their staff, to the, to our two, uh, principals, um, um, elect, um, I don't know if elect's the right word, but ones that are in, in charge now. Interim, interim, thank you, Mr. President. Um, to the secondary complex, um, Mike, you're doing a great job, okay? Keep up the good work, um, bathe the battle. Um, I'm gonna add that to, uh, my morning, you know, because I'm retired, so I get up to drink coffee, so I'll make sure I tune in at nine o'clock for the Bathe the Battle, uh, going forward and check you guys out. Um, congratulations to the boys' basketball team, the girls' basketball team. I'm with you, Mr. Superintendent, it's about, um, the grades. I know when I coached, um, and I had, it was a, I had a, uh, a reputation of I had the, my girls had the highest GPA for five years in a row, um, out of any sports team and, and so, um, Coach, keep up that, that good work with that. Um, it is, it's about, because everybody's not gonna make it to the pros. Some people not, might not make it to college, so what are you gonna do? You gotta make sure you put your best foot forward, have a backup plan, that's what it's about, having a backup plan. And education is the backup plan. Um, Superintendent, you know, keep up the good work, keep up the good work, you and your staff, administration, teachers, custodians, I would say everybody in the district, but especially, you know, to our students and their families. Stay, stay the course, make sure you're doing your best, put your best foot forward. You may fall, you may slip, but get back up, dust it off and get back to it. Um, I'm a firm believer in, um, supporting this district. Um, I've been in this community for thirty years. Uh, my wife was educated by this district, my kids were educated by this district. And I came to this district under Mr. Jackson when he brought me in and, uh, and I was a pair pro in the woodshop. Um, I always think back to that, Mr. Jackson. Um, so, but I've always supported this district in a monetary way because, um, the Lord has blessed me in ways that I can do that. Where, where there's, uh, um, rallies, where there's homecoming, I donated money. When I hit the girls' team, I, 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 I paid for the uniform for five years, um, and they looked good, you know, with, it was in Nike from head to toe. So Patrick, what I'm gonna do is that, first of all, Superintendent, you need to get me everybody's size in, in, in your office. Okay, get those sizes to me, but Patrick, I'm gonna donate polo shirts to all the kids involved with the Bathe the Battle because I want them to look like they on Channel Four, okay? So just give me their sizes, okay? And my business would allow me to, so give me the sizes, okay? Soon as you can and I'll get them to them and, you know, it'll be a red shirt with the M C on it, you know what I'm saying? So they look uniform, because I'm a firm believer, when you look good, you act good, you play good, you work good and those are my comments, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Ms. Collins.
Uh, I'm gonna say I was able to witness Wyatt singing. Um, he didn't just sing, he did get the governor dancing, um, they were all enjoying it. It was, it was good energy in the room while they were going. Um, I wanna address, um, the parent that spoke tonight regarding, um, the funds for the school. We're very transparent with the funds and we do discuss it quite in-depth in our workshops and when, um, we have our audit presentation, it's all public. Um, so I would be happy to share when we know that's coming up on the agenda with you so you can attend that and really hear in-depth, um, what happens with the funds that do come in for the district and how they are allocated, um, and how we're required to spend those funds, so it gets very in-depth. Um, I, I think it's coming up because we haven't had that in a while, so I'll make sure that information gets to you. Um, I wanna say to Coach Trailer, the boys have been outstanding this year in their grades, their parents and community support has been outstanding, but the love and compassion that you have for them on and off the court, they are shining because of you. And you deserve every bit of recognition for that. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Walker.
I'd like to thank the G S R P, um, and Seminole Team for the presentations tonight and with this beautiful artwork that we have, uh, for Board Appreciation Month. I'm, I'm looking forward to attending the Black History Celebration next week on the twenty-ninth. Um, looking forward to that and joining it with the students. Um, I also am very proud of the Mount Clemens at the Secondary Complex on Honor Row. I'm that someone who really enjoys, um, the academic part of school. Um, wish that we could bring back Quiz Bowl, I don't know, Tina is still in here, but, but, um, yeah, that'll be one thing that I think would be great for those kind of students. Um, I would like to thank the community, the staff for really working hard on our, on our first session for the strategic planning. Um, it's gonna really give us the path and the focus on what our next year's look like as a district. Um, thank you to the girls, the, the Lady Bathers, uh, Coach and the way that the girls played this season. Uh, they really worked hard with the amount of athletes that they had this season, um, going into districts. Um, thank you to Coach Trailer and her coaching staff. Um, I've been to the home games and the away games all the way on Detroit. Um, they like to say that I'm always there, as a joke. Um, but I've always said that those boards are great examples of student athletes, um, because the hard work is on and off the court. And I'm looking forward to the restart of the Mount Clemens Committee Coalition, um, with the help of Pastor Ireland. Um, our first meeting will be February twenty-seventh at three-thirty P M at the Secondary Complex and I'm just looking forward to the great things that we continue to do as a district.
I'm up.
Oh, I was ready to say, that's my comment. You know, he might have got to take a breath.
I know, you know.
Seen.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Dr. McFadden.
Thank you, sir. Uh, first I want to thank everybody in the community, I want to thank the G S R P Seminole Secondary Complex, uh, John James, Mel Bay, to give us recognition, the board members. Um, this board here has sacrificed a lot, I know we heard some comments about people being here on the board forever. Um, but this board, I know, there's some boards in the state that pay their board members. There's some boards in the state that provide transportation for their board members. We as this board stood firm on no compensation to do the job that we do. And I want to say thank you to my fellow board members, because I know the sacrifices that you make. Most of you guys travel to conferences, spend many hours here in this building till past midnight arguing and going back and forth and making decisions. And the passion that we have, um, so with finance, so with curriculum, I want to say thank you for myself to you. That's what I want to make sure comes out. Um, for our coaches, all our coaches, it starts from the varsity level down. And I have seen the work put in from our varsity coaches down to the J V coaches and even to the middle school program and they have been a big change and a big difference. Our middle school program, um, following the lead from our varsity and our high school programs has been amazing and I want to say thank you to them. Uh, varsity leads the way. Uh, the all-academic team for boys' basketball, that is the best highlight I can hear tonight. But also hearing about the N W E A data that should be coming up. Um, of course, I've been talking to most of the students and not the parents. Uh, congrats to the students, a hundred and twenty-four students making the honor roll, that's a big deal. Also want to say that, um, a lot of our students in this district are very successful. Funny, Wyatt, one of them, but, um, I talked to a lot of the students, of course, you know my son is an eighth grader here, so I spend more time with students than I do with parents. We got a lot of talented students. Some of them come off kind of rough and harsh, but when you sit down with them, they're, they're pretty funny kids and very talented. So I want to say thank you to- So I wanna say thank you to our students, because our students, sometimes we take them for, for granted, but we need to thank them for getting up in the morning and trying to make an effort to get here to this school. I watch kids, students walk to school, some of them don't be on time all the time, but at least they're making an effort. So we gotta, also wanna thank them for putting in the effort, because us teaching the information but them providing information, putting it out there, that's their effort, so I wanna say thank, thank you. Mr. President, I can always say thank you for good, the bad, and the ugly, I'm gonna leave the ugly for my side and the good and the bad for everybody else. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. I'd like to start by saying congratulations to all of the students that exemplified their scholastic abilities by being named to the honor roll at the elementary level, the middle school level, and the secondary level. It shows that those students go above and beyond to achieve, and hopefully their efforts can rub off on some of their colleagues in, in the classroom, and they can be mentors and models for those students that are not achieving or not on the honor roll, they can look up to those students and try to mirror and model what they're doing and be on the honor rolls. Kudos to the boys', girls' basketball teams, the volleyball teams, the middle school sports team for competing hard, it's not often, it's not always whether you win or win or lose of the activity, it's being, one, being able to be involved in the activity, and two, and giving your all. Sometime when you give your all, you fall up, you come up short, but at least you know that you gave your best and you gave your all, and kudos to those student athletes for keeping their grades up, being eligible, academically eligible to, to participate. Here in Mount Clemens, we, we don't duck and dodge it that we have the highest academic standard for student athletes probably in the state. Well, maybe there, there might be some private schools that might have a more strict, stringent academic requirement, but our, our standards are higher than the state's standards, and boards that I've sat on that have adopted those policies, we don't apologize for doing that, because if you can score a touchdown, you should be able to write a sentence. You can articulate the radius of a three-point shot, you should be able to articulate a composition, and so we take, we take it seriously at this level, and we get the blame for it over, over the years, we've gotten blamed, well, you know, nobody else is doing that, well, we're not nobody else, we're, we're, we're here to do the best thing that we can for our students, and to hear, I think, Mr. Superintendent said there were six or seven of our varsity players that made all-academic, that kudos goes out to Coach Trailer and her coaching staff, 'cause when, I recall last year when Coach Trailer coached the dance team, all of those students were honor roll students, so she understands the importance of academics and student athletes, and it's exemplified by half her team being named to the all-academic team, so kudos goes out to Coach Trailer and her staff, and those parents in the support group for our student athletes, because if we didn't have your support, we wouldn't have anything, so we, we appreciate, we appreciate that. Good luck to all our sports teams as they begin the conference championships, conference playoffs, and the upcoming road to the Bresner. Bresner is where the state basketball championship is held for, for the boys, can't recall where it's gonna be this year, but good luck to the Bath and Bathers and the Lady Bathers as they began to compete in the conference championships and ultimately the state playoffs, the road to the state playoffs in the Bresner Center. Those are my comments. Thank, yep, Chair would entertain, oh, no, 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 thank you, thank you, thank you for all the students that were involved in providing these cards, these handprints, I mean, I, I look at, I probably got these posters going back to nineteen ninety that I have, that haven't been torn up or thrown away, so I, I appreciate, and you know, often I go around to the buildings and try to find the students that had signed, that put together something or, or signed something, and, and thank them in person for that. Those are my comments, Chair would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Member Jay Walker, seconded by Member Dee Walker to adjourn, call roll, please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at seven forty-six in the P M.